I'll do a couple of the sort of easier, technical ones first. All the commas after the word and at the end of each whereas is gone. A couple of the semicolons in the middle of the whereas is changed to commas. The whereas is unbolded. The last proclamation we did, they were unbolded. I'm not sure we've got a standard thing for that yet. But I'll, I'll deal with the bigger changes. The, one, two, three, four, the, the fourth whereas had two sentences in it. So I split it up into a fourth and a fifth whereas, whereas the fourth whereas would be just the first sentence. Dr. King believed that service was the soul's highest purpose and was the path to happiness and greatness. I guess that means a comma and, or semicolon and will need to be added. Whereas, and then, Dr. King once said. The, the end of the quotation, I changed to a question mark, single quote, comma, double quote, with the leading adding to that sentence to make it one sentence instead of two in that whereas. And then, it's the last whereas that has a lot of changes. And then the now therefore clause that does. And the last whereas is, I moved a lot of what was originally there into the now therefore, I think. Because it seemed more like a now therefore than a whereas to me. And I created a more Amherst local whereas that reads, whereas the residents of the town, I might have missed some stuff, of the town of Amherst. Through the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Committee of Amherst, Inc., have been observing this holiday as a com- at a commemorative breakfast for over thirty-five years in order to reflect on Dr. King's legacy and recognize area high school students and adult community members who continue to work towards the dreams, ideals, and service for which he stood. I took most of that language directly from the invitation to the community breakfast that we received and the name of the committee from that invitation. Thirty-five years is yesterday, is last year, today's the thirty-sixth. So I, we could count back and maybe put since a certain year, if we'd rather do that, which would allow it to be less changeable year over year. And then the now therefore, I attempted to make it one now therefore with one sentence. And so it's got a lot of changes to it. Now therefore, we, the town council, the Amherst Town Council proclaimed January fifteen, twenty twenty, as Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Comma, I gotta figure out mine. Invite the residents of Amherst to join us in a bell-ringing ceremony and reading of the proclamation on the steps of Town Hall at four thirty P.M. And encourage residents of Amherst to attend the Thirty-Sixth Annual Martin Luther King Jr. Commemorative Breakfast at the Amherst Regional Middle School Cafeteria at eight thirty A.M. on Saturday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty. I realize now that adding the January eighteenth, the four thirty P.M. for Town Hall reading should probably also say on January fifteenth, just to be clear. And I tried to put them in the correct time order. So I would guess I would add at four thirty P.M. on January fifteenth, twenty twenty. Comma, and encourage residents.
Good. Thoughts, suggestions, things we've missed, problems, anyone? Take a moment. Yes?
I was just gonna say, I think it's possible for me to project this if we get that set right, Athena. If that would be helpful to everyone.
I'm okay with what I have in front of me. Does anyone else need to project it?
Okay, I guess we don't.
And I think it's been some time, I don't wanna talk over people's reading, but since the council actually, or the select board, I guess in previous time, has actually done this. So I think it's nice that it's being done, but that's not. So Mandy, do you have the small changes that you caught?
I do.
Okay. If no one has any other changes or observations, I'm ready to entertain a motion.
So I'll move to declare the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Proclamation as, there's one more change. The word proclamation in the title needs an A. Declare the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Proclamation as amended clear at the GOL meeting on December eighteenth, twenty nineteen, clear, consistent, and actionable.
Is there a second?
Second.
Evan, seconds. I see no reason for more discussions, so I'm gonna call a immediate vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. I see, anyone opposed? No. So I see four in favor, none opposed, and one counselor absent. Okay. It occurs to me, this is work for the chair, that it would be useful for this body to have actually a list of regularly recurring proclamations, of which I assume this would be one. Puerto Rican Day, I think there are a host of them, human rights, and so on. So I'm going to make a note to the chair to begin assembling those and also the dates. I think that would be useful to this committee in the future, right? So we would have a, a list, we would know ahead of time what's supposed to be. I mean, things that are recurring every year. And hence, maybe we could also be helpful in reminding people of that so that we don't get things thrown at us at the last minute. So I'm going to suggest making a list of recurring, okay? Second item on our agenda is, again, out of order. It's the issue of, I'm not sure we really wanna take it up now, but the issue of President and Vice President. This came up at the council meeting and it seemed to delay the vote for the offices of President and Vice President, at least for a longer term. The council, or at least some members of the council, seemed to wanna have a discussion. It wasn't clear to me completely, but hopefully some of you can enlighten me as to what the nature of that discussion would be. It also seemed that it might be something that we should talk about a little bit for a few minutes. But that was also something that came under items unanticipated since it came up at the recent council meeting. So what I have here in the packet, I believe it's in, it should be in the packet, is the ROP that relates to the powers and duties of the President and Vice President. And I guess, and this is up to the committee, is there anything we can add to this discussion? I would like someone to help me understand what the nature of this discussion. And maybe no one knows. Any thoughts on this? So this is in your packet, it's also in the ROP. Complete Document two point two, Powers and Duties of the President and Vice President. Is this what we would have as the focus of a discussion? Or is the, is this another issue entirely that I'm missing? And if we don't wanna talk about this, we can simply say we didn't have anything to say. Wanna move on? It's all right, no one has to say, I mean, I just, it seemed that at the council meeting, there seemed to be some sense that this is something that GOL could take up. But I have to confess that it wasn't clear to me what it was that I was supposed to take up. And so maybe I misunderstood, maybe there's nothing we really have to say. It's, uh, nothing we can contribute as a committee to this discussion, other than point to this document.
I think it's probably premature. Because there were clearly at least two members of the council who have some opinion on how the President and/or Vice President have been operating. But then we were told, but we don't wanna have this discussion tonight. So without knowing what their thoughts, concerns are, I don't know that we could weigh in. Because otherwise, we're just looking at the rules and going, is there anything we need to add or subtract? But without knowing the reason or the concerns, there's nothing that we can really, I don't, you know. The only thing we can do is talk about our personal opinions of how the Vice President has, has the end, I don't know.
All right, I agree. That's really not appropriate, I think. Is there any other document that I should be aware of that governs this besides the rules of procedure? I mean, there's one mentioned briefly in the Charter.
The Charter.
Right, but it, it doesn't have much more to say, right? I mean, it's, right, okay. Those are the two documents that define these two offices, okay? All right, then I'm willing to just let that go. All right. I'm sorry?
So we're whipping through this.
Oh yeah, we're gonna whip through it, no, don't, don't you worry. Yeah, we're, we're already at eight. Item number four is, in fact, Rule ten point five H. This came to us again as a result of the recent council meeting. So it really falls under item number eight, item's not anticipated. But I was, put it on the agenda. And so, actually, it is on the agenda, so.
It's on number two.
Right, it's number two, right. My apologies. So anyway, Rule ten point five H, which is coming to us courtesy of OCA. And so you should have in your packet a, the proposal, which is basically changing one word under ten point five H. But we also had some committee discussion of that. So does the Chair of OCA want to take the lead on this? And we can talk a little bit about what we think can or cannot be done in terms of ten point five H.
So I think, so obviously, I don't think I need to go back through the rationale about why I think we need a revision to this rule. So I focus instead on what this should look like. So what OCA is proposing is just having the word regular in front of committee to specify that our normal, regularly scheduled council committee meetings need to have public comment. But if you schedule something as a special meeting, then you are not obligated to have public comment. There seemed to be some concern from the council that perhaps that was a little too broad, that that could allow a committee to say, this is a special meeting, and so no public comment. I, I don't, I don't personally share that concern. But there was some idea put forth about exempting specifically interviews. And that was something that was discussed in OCA very briefly. And that was something that was also the topic of a conversation between myself and the Vice Chair of OCA. And what we opted to do in the end, so we, we did consider that. I wanna put, put it out there that that wasn't an idea that was novel on Monday night. That was something that we had discussed. And the reason we decided not to do that was, one, just for simplicity's sake. Two, because this is parallels the language of the Charter. And we felt like that, that type of parallelism would be useful. But three, because in theory, there might be not yet thought of other types of meetings where we wouldn't want public comment. And so exempting just interviews, well, if CRC decides that they're gonna have like a work session where they're just gonna hammer out something and they're not gonna vote, and they don't feel like they need public comment, you know, maybe they should be allowed to have a special meeting. As long as in their regular meetings, when they actually take that item up, they're, they're accepting public comment. And so I guess the thought was, instead of keeping it incredibly narrow, just parallel the Charter and allow, allow committees some flexibility here so that we're not overly prescriptive and so that we don't have to continuously revise this rule every time something new pops up.
Steve?
Yeah, so I'm, I assume that the difference between a special meeting and a regular meeting. So we've determined our, our meeting schedule for twenty twenty already. So those are the regular meetings. So any meeting, in my opinion, in my opinion, a special meeting is any meeting that's not one of those meetings. So that's off schedule for any reason, a snowstorm, something added to the agenda, you know, emergency, whatever. So I think that, I mean, I think that there, so according to the Charter, regular meetings of the Town Council shall be held at a time and place fixed by measure, but it's once per month. So we fix those by measure, because we all voted, no yea. So I'm, I'm, I'm good with the proposal, because I, I do think it has, you know, allows for this discretion. Little, just a little story, I just saw a friend of mine who was just appointed, just appointed to the Province Town Planning Board. So I asked him about the process that he, he just moved to Province Town, now he's on the planning board. So in Province Town, Select Board is basically a Select Board vote. So I asked him how he got, how that worked. He said he saw in the newspaper that someone was being interviewed. He thought he could do a better job, so he put his name in the hat. He was interviewed, and they, they chose him. So I looked at the Province Town Select, I was just really curious. So this, Province Town, they have special meeting, which is where they do these interviews, and then immediately followed by regular meeting. So, so what you're describing, I think, is a process that is sort of adopted by other communities, that you can have a special meeting concurrently or on the same day as a regular meeting, but for the specific purpose of something like, like an interview.
So, the only thing, I, I agree with all of that. I think we're gonna parallel the council charter. That makes sense for committees of the council. I would just point to, for the purposes of if you're writing a memo on this and our recommendation, ten five C and D, where C says committees shall meet regularly at such times and places as they may prescribe. I think that goes exactly to what Steve was saying, is every committee has set a regular meeting schedule. Those are the regular meetings. And D, special meetings, may be held if called by committee's chair or at the request of one-third of committee members, but not fewer than two. That kind of defines what a special meeting is, as opposed to a regular meeting, which is the times we've prescribed, you know, that, that goes to the schedule to me. And so I'm not as concerned with this concern about, well, then every meeting the chair calls will be a special meeting and won't have public comment. I think leaving the special meetings open to not having it, but allowing them to have it, this doesn't prohibit them from having it, is, is just what we've been doing on the council. And makes sense to have our committees follow the same rule, essentially.
Evan?
Yeah, and what I think is important to note is that we've had a number of special Town Council meetings. And with the exception of one, which had a fairly tight time constraint, there's been public comment allowed at, at those. And so there seemed to be some, some fear that this would prohibit or discourage public comment at special meetings. But I, I think that largely speaking, most special meetings would likely still have public comment, unless the chair or the committee has some real rationale to disallow it, which I, so, so I, I, I think that we don't have to be overly concerned with, this isn't gonna lead to some type of crush down on, crackdown on, on public comment.
Just a question that I have. If a chair, say, I decide at a special, I mean, what power does a chair have to, to decide whether there can or cannot be public comment? This is clearly the regular, if we have this change, a regular committee, meeting must have or shall have a period of public comment. So at, at some other kind of meeting, the chair can simply say, I don't want public comment? What, is that, is that written somewhere? Is that something that I should know about? What gives the chair the authority to say there cannot be public comment at this meeting? Is there an answer to that question? Or is it obvious?
By, by setting the agenda without public comment. The chair has the right to set the agenda, and as long as it complies with the rules. So if the chair deems it a special meeting, if we would change this rule, if the chair deems it a special meeting and decides not to put public comment on that agenda.
It's the setting of the agenda.
Yeah.
All right, well, what I'm hearing is that we are, as a group, by consensus, happy with the way this changed. This is simply inserting the word regular under in H. And saying that we are essentially paralleling the Charter in this. And I'll get some clarity on that, but that's all right. And that I've cited five C and five D, ten five C and ten five D, to make the point that it's already clearly stated what a special meeting is in the rules. And this is not going to in any way hinder or prevent regular, public comment even at those meetings. But it does allow OCA the power or ability to prevent it at a meeting where it is not a regular meeting and there are interviews taking place. Set. Anyone, yes, Mandy, anything you'd like to add to that?
Do we want, does the Chair of OCA wanna vote from GOL on this? Would that be helpful for the next meeting, a vote to recommend this change from GOL?
My preference.
Yes, I think that would be appropriate, I agree.
So I'll, I'll move to recommend the council add the word regular to the beginning of Rule ten point five H.
Is there a second? So Counselor Ross, seconds. Any further discussion? Then I'm gonna proceed to vote on this motion. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye. Aye. I see, and any nays? No. So I see four affirmative, no negative, and one counselor absent. Yes, Evan?
So OCA is, is requesting two rule changes, which you'll notice in the report. This was the more pressing one, which is why it, it's sort of being, the process was expedited a little bit in front of this body. But just to put on GOL's radar, because I don't remember if I said it yet, Rule eight point six, which is consideration of non-emergency measures prior to vote, which are about the council's ability to act prior to consideration by a body. Under Appointments, it says, "The council shall not vote to confirm any appointment made by the town manager until it has been considered by the Outreach, Communications, and Appointments Committee." So just putting on the radar that there's also an interest in OCA of striking the words made by the town manager to just say, "The council shall not vote to confirm any appointment until it has been considered." I'm not quite sure what, why in Rules, the town manager appointments were carved out, but Town Council appointments weren't. That one obviously isn't as pressing, because it doesn't need to be done before interviews. But just sort of putting on GOL's radar that that is another rule change that OCA will be seeking.
Okay. You put that as a future intended item? Consider Rule eight point six, and that suggestion, okay, that request from OCA. All right. So now I wanna move to what is actually item number three on the agenda, which is to continue our discussion of Town Council Committee Reorganization. And this, I think, will take up a good portion of our time this morning. We have in our packet two documents that you should be referring to. And since this has been the very hard and able work of Counselor Ross, I'm gonna ask him to, let me, first, let's just get a sense from all of you how you'd like to proceed. We have a rationale for this, which I spelled out very briefly in my memo to the Town Council, essentially just a set of kind of goals or what's sort of driving, reasons behind reorganization are. And I didn't, if anyone has any concerns or would like to add to that list. So there's a rationale that we have that would be in the report, why we're doing this, why we think it's, it's worth doing. It's also part of our charge to review this anyway on an annual basis. And then the second is the actual proposal. And since the proposal, at least at the moment, involves, in a sense, changes to all the standing council committees and the elimination of two of them, it seems that we should go to that, unless there's any thoughts or concerns about the rationale, which is in my memo. And then the question becomes what, how do we wanna start? What I had was starting with finance, I was gonna go committee by committee. And this is open to debate or change, but I was gonna move committee by committee. And I was gonna suggest, at least in my order, was finance. And then Governance, Organization, Legislation, GOL on OCA. Or GOL, the new GOL. And then Committee Resources and to be named, right now it's named Town Services and Outreach. Evan, since I'm asking you to sort of shepherd us through this document, is that an order you're, except you like? Or do you wanna change that? That's fine, okay, everyone else is okay with that? So we start with Finance, which I'm hoping is the, the easiest of these. But you should have in front of you a sample chart sheet, a draft chart sheet for Finance. Evan?
Yeah, I think Finance is gonna be the easy one. The, our, the attempt of taking these committee might, committee, might fall apart when we get to the others, since there's so much shifting between them. But Finance is pretty simple, just, just to point out to you, there are two documents. Just to point out to you, there are two documents. One is a clean copy, which you could open, like, in the packet. The other one has comments, and because it's comments in a Word document, that's probably the better one to be working with, but that one you would need to actually download to their computer to see the comments. So, Finance Committee, this is pretty simple. This is the existing finance charge merged with the existing audit charge. And so, basically, everything that was in the audit charge has been worked into the appropriate parts of the Finance Committee charge. I did split up in all of these underneath the charge, because a lot of these now have fairly lengthy bullet sections, trying to group them thematically, and so, I grouped budgets and appropriations together, and then investigations and annual audit together, just to highlight those sections. The only thing that's my idea in here, that's like my thought, is in purpose, it said, "The Finance Committee shall advise the Town Council on all financial matters," and I just specified "town financial matters," which is a very small charge, but I think, again, sort of speaks to this, my desire to see finance focus a little more narrowly on the town's finances, as opposed to some broader questions that we've seen them take on about, say, the financial stability of other institutions.
Okay. Thoughts on this charge? Mandy?
So, easy but not. The first bullet point is a combination of a number of different charter sections, and so, I actually, I think, attempted to split it into four bullet points, with adding review and make recommendations to the Town Council on or on measures regarding, or measures authorizing all sorts of things, various ones, so that it's clearer that it's not all buried into the same thing, and then reference the charter section. And Evan, I can send you my full document at the end, so you can see what's going on. But, yeah, I attempted to split it into four, but then my, I had a big question about the second part of that big first one, the capital inventory, capital improvement program, and infrastructure. Because our JCPC charge is to make recommendations to the town manager on the capital inventory, capital improvement plan, all of that, I didn't actually fully look up JCPC's charge, but I know JCPC is charged in the charter with making recommendations to the town manager on, at a minimum, the five-year capital improvement program. So, I don't know what to do with that group of three for finance, because this one is sort of recommendations to the council on that, not recommendations to the town manager. JCPC is charged with, towards the town manager per the charter, but it might be good for there to be included somewhere, someone to talk to the council about that, you know, so I don't know what to do with that section, but I thought I'd, I'm struggling with that, but the overlap concerns me, that we might be, in theory, charging two different committees with almost the same thing. The, when you split those up, then the third and fourth bullet points, the hold a public hearing on the budget proposed, and then the review, any requests for new appropriations or supplemental budgets, are almost overlapped with annual budgets, supplemental budgets, and other appropriations and financial transfers, that first one, in a way. So, you know, and I think it's a legacy of, this was one of the first charges ever written by this council, and so, I think there can be some cleaning up that doesn't actually change the duties, but makes it clearer and doesn't have a lot of overlap. I like my adding review and make recommendations to the Town Council in front of all of these, instead of just, I think one of them, I don't know whether it had it in there at all, because I can only see my changes, so I'm not sure what I deleted initially from it. On investigations and audit, my only recommendation is on the second bullet point, oh, I had one recommendation on the last bullet point in finance, budgets and appropriation, the one that says upon referral from the Town Council, review and hold hearings on water, sewer, and other municipal utility rates. I wanted to add the phrase "if required by law" after hearings, because I'm not sure we're required to hold a hearing, I just don't know, and so, I don't want the charge to put a requirement for a hearing in that might not actually be required. And then, in the investigations and audit, the second bullet point, adopt procedures for selections of an accountant. The actual charter language is that the Town Council adopts procedures, so I would delete the word "adopt" and write in "make recommendations to the Town Council on procedures for selection of an accountant or firm," since the charter says the council is the adopting group.
Okay.
Yes, I do, I can, I'll just forward you my whole document as I go through it, so you can do the compare.
Just a question of information, in that first bullet point, under budgets and appropriations, the cap limit, what was it, the phrase again, that you were concerned about? Is that currently in the charge of the Finance Committee? Those words? Back to budgets and appropriations, first bullet point.
Yeah.
Everything, it's just copied, correct? So, this is language that is in the existing charge, and so, it's a question in general of cleaning up organization, et cetera?
I just thought it would be easier if we split it out into each charter section and identified whether it came from a charter or whether it came from our own thing.
Okay, that becomes two.
And then, when we split it, I actually had it become three.
Three bullet points.
So, budgets, supplemental budgets, other appropriations, and financial transfers as one, capital inventory, capital improvement, and infrastructure as a second one, and then purchase, sale, lease of, oh, I made it four, I guess, purchase, sale, leasing of land or buildings as a third one, and borrowing and debt as a fourth one. Just, I thought it read easier, that's all. And then, for the first two, there was charter sections that could be actually cited, and the second two, there were not, that I could tell.
And that's a document that you would share with Evan?
I will send it off to Evan.
Okay, all right. It sounds, though, Steve, I'm including you in this question, obviously, but it sounds like philosophically, there's no objection to what we're proposing, there's some changes in terms of clarity, and maybe bring it more into, make, bring this charge more into conformity with what actually the committee is doing, which obviously is a service we could provide at any time, so that's a plus. And Mandy has changes that she has suggested, and Evan will get. Anything else that anyone wants to add to this charge or has concerns about with this charge? Evan? Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I have one more.
If it's in your document.
I just sent the document off to Evan, that has all four charges in it. Staff support. The charter has the clerk of the council as coordinating the audit, the annual audit, as part of the charter language, so under staff support, I would add "and clerk of the council" in parentheses for audit coordination.
Okay.
It's in it.
Okay, good. Something I need advice from all of you on is, my thought was that as we work through this, and we come to some consensus as to what we'd like these sample charges to look like, I would share them in advance with the relevant chair of the committee for their input or thoughts, rather than just have it sprung upon them on January 6th. I mean, there will be a report in the packet, a memo from the council, or from the committee, that will describe the rationale and will include these documents, but I thought that with each of the committees that's being impacted, and particularly with finance, I'd like the chair to see it even before that, as long as people are okay with that. Okay? Mandy?
I'm fine with that. I keep paging down and seeing more. They're in the document, but one needs discussion. The Finance Council Members Service on Other Town Budget-Related Committees. I know there has been some frustration on the council, particularly to JCPC and what this charge, how it limits who can serve on JCPC, because it requires no more than two Finance Committee members to be able to be on JCPC. It does the same with budget coordinating, but then we call the Committee of the Whole for budget coordinating and all, and then it's got participatory budgeting. And so, I, I'm thinking it might not be necess, it would be a change for who can serve on JCPC and budget coordinating, but I wonder if we should delete it completely, as a recommendation of maybe we don't need these strict strictures on which counselors can serve on a different committee in a yet another committee's charge?
So, where would these strictures then exist?
If we wanted them, we should put them in those specific charges, instead of in this charge, I would say.
So, it would be in the participatory budgeting commission charge, it would be in the JCPC charge, and the BCG charge, is what you're saying? These should be moved, if we want them, they should be in their charges?
If we want them, yeah.
And why do you think they're here, why they were put, why were they put here in the first place?
I don't remember.
Okay.
But it seems odd to have it here versus...
I guess the idea would be that it alerts the members of this committee as to what their possible, I mean, that they have, you know, put possible duties on other committees, right? So, it's informative in that sense, right? If you're a member of the Finance Council, right? You wanna know this, right?
I mean, maybe, but it says no more than two, so in theory, finance can have zero, and all of them can come from somewhere else, or, I don't know whether we even wanna keep that restriction of no more than two, number one, but it seems a weird thing to put here than in the other charges themselves.
Any thoughts?
Yeah, I actually agree with, so I personally, personal opinion, would like to keep that two restriction, because I think it's, we wanna make sure that the expertise of Finance Committee is represented on JCPC, but I like the idea that you bring in more of the council on something like capital, which is very important, so you have the expertise of Finance Committee, but then you also broaden participation. Otherwise, JCPC is just a subcommittee of finance, literally, 'cause three members of finance would be on JCPC, it'd be a quorum of finance on JCPC. But I think, but I agree with you that, that it makes more sense as a restriction in JCPC's and BCG's charge.
Than it does here?
Than it does here, and it's currently not in that. We revised that charge at some point, I don't remember what happened. So, but, but I don't wanna, I personally don't wanna lose that, so if we are recommending deletion from that, I would like it to be paired with the recommended revision to JCPC.
I'm okay, and we can have that discussion then, I just think it's weird here.
So, for the moment, we're going to leave it in terms of the, or no? Do you wanna take it out? Do you wanna leave it?
Delete it and add it into JCPC and pair it with a revised JCPC charge?
That would be my, it's a section that exists on no other charge, anywhere else in the town.
So, if we were to delete it, it would require, and I assume I would do this, checking the charges of the other three committees and making sure that that language is in their charges, and if not, then we'd need a revision to those charges to insert it. Is that what you're saying? That's what you'd like?
We have a revision somewhere.
I know, but at this point, we're done, I don't think we have the time or energy to check it, but I can do that, but I'm getting the sense that at least two of the members would like to take it out.
I could check it and deal with it, if you'd like me to, since I'm the one that requested deleting it.
But I'm getting a sense, at least from two, and I'm sort of, can go either way, I don't know, Steve, okay, so there's a sense, consensus to remove this. So, Evan, you would remove it, I take it from your final product, and Mandy or I, or both of us, will see that this language is transferred to the relevant committees, and if not, then we're gonna need revision of those charges. Okay? Unless there's further discussion, I'd like to move on to, I'm sorry, Evan?
I don't remember if we ever actually did this, but I am looking at the revised JCPC charge, that I think that we did, I think we voted to adopt as a committee, but it's never been adopted by the council, but it does have a revised composition section that says three current town counselors, two of whom shall be on the Finance Committee, which I'm recognizing actually contradicts the Finance Committee language, which says no more than two, and this, so, there is a revision in play, but it also needs to be fixed, so, we have something to work with, but it's actually wrong.
It's wrong, okay. Good. So, I would like to stand, I'm sorry, Evan?
So, Finance Committee is meeting today, right? And this is a what? Yesterday? So, Finance won't be able to see this then, before the January 6th meeting?
Well...
Any committee won't, right?
Well, I was, again, my thought was that I would send any revisions we've made to the relevant chairs of the committees, so in this case, it would, my suggestion was that I would send whatever gets crafted by consensus today to the Chair of Finance to look at, if that's all right, but not to all the committee members. The whole council would get a memo from GOL with these charges attached, but they would not get that, I think, as soon as the chair hopefully would get this. That's what I had in mind. So, we're being joined by the council president, and we are just beginning, really, our discussion of the Town Council Committee Restructuring, and we've just worked our way through the sample charge, proposed charge for finance, and a number of changes have been suggested by Mandy Jo, and those are gonna be sent on to Evan, and then a consensus or composite document will be crafted with those changes included. The next charge that we're looking at is GOL, correct? And having Evan take us through it. So, Evan, GOL?
Yeah, so this one's a little more complicated, because if you look at the questions, I have several questions, or if you look at my comments, there are several questions in there, and so, this is where it's a little difficult to talk about, just one in isolation.
That's all right.
And that's because this also relates to a suggestion that I'm making about what happens to OCA.
Right.
And so, the idea being, and so, let me, let me, let me talk about, just briefly, what I'm suggesting for OCA, 'cause I think that'll inform.
I agree.
The idea is, what would happen to OCA is essentially, OCA would retain its outreach and communications aspect, but appointments would move over. And then, what happens is, OCA becomes much more about sort of the day-to-day provision of services by the town, and so, that's everything from, you know, public ways to any measure that might affect how the town clerk might operate, such as a campaign finance measure, any measure that it might affect how one of the departments deliver services.
Can I have, I have a question for you, Evan?
Yeah.
My initial understanding was that OCA was going to go out of existence, and that we would create two, CRC would be split into two, so maybe what I'm hearing now is that you're calling, what you're calling OCA, or the new OCA, would be the result of taking some of the, is that? 'Cause you have a TSO.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're either, yeah, no, you're right, it's a recommend, this is, this is my attachment to OCA showing through, right? It's a dissolution, it's a dissolution of OCA and a new committee, as opposed to a dramatic revision of OCA. And so, the reason I think it's important to preface, that is, looking at the new GOL charge, or as perhaps you've suggested, G O A L, an actual goal, which I like, is the appointments, the appointments move from what is now OCA to GOL, and of course, the rationale behind that being that if we're looking at sort of the organization of town government, we've already talked to some extent about committee charges, about reviewing committees, it seems like appointments to town committees logically fall within GOL. If we're looking at town, Town Council, how the Town Council structures its organizations, what it actually does, its governance of the town, appointment to multiple-member bodies like Planning Board... like Planning Board and ZBA, it seems like it logically fits in this committee. The premise for putting appointments with OCA had always been that outreach and communications has influence on recruitment, which relates to appointments, but a year in, we have never seen OCA do anything with recruitment, any type of outreach that has to do with recruitment, and in fact, that's been done completely by the CPOs, and the OCA Subcommittee on Outreach, in their last meeting, made a decision that they did not see recruitment as part of the outreach charge, because that is sufficiently covered by the CPOs, and so if you, if you take that, then it doesn't make sense to put appointments in OCA anymore, because it doesn't actually relate to the outreach, and it makes more sense in GOL. I also moved, moved a few other things over, but now I have some questions about whether that makes sense, because if, if the new committee, TSO or wherever it becomes, has to do sort of with the day-to-day operations of government, then perhaps coordinate the annual review process of the town manager, and because it has to do with provision of services by the departments, appointments by the town manager for department heads, those might actually logically fall within TSO, and so I think this is much more complicated, because essentially what I did is I took everything out of OCA, except the outreach stuff, and put it in this revised GOL. I think appointments to town committees make sense in GOL, I think appointments by the town council make sense in GOL, but the two I'm uncertain on are the review process of the town manager and appointments to department heads, because maybe those actually more logically belong in the new committee, since they really have to do with sort of the operation of the, the town government as a whole, and so this is where these things get tricky.
Right, right.
And there's no, there's no, you know, clean way to delineate these, so those are where my questions come from.
Mandy?
So, I, I would advocate for, even though the document I just sent Evan doesn't have this added in, appointments is part of the name, and that clears up a lot of your questions, is does it fall under governance or organization part, you just add an appointment section into the charge format and throw them in, and then GOL works too. My, I've got a number of suggestions and concerns, some of which is not just of moving appointments over, most of it's not necessarily concerns, you tracked the language, it's just I have concerns about the language. The governance section dropped, the first bullet point dropped at, our current GOL charge has advised the town council on matters of internal council rules, governance and organization, and you dropped the governance and organization section, from what I could tell, I don't know whether you intended to, or intended to, and then put it into both then, organization, and as you reorganized this, you intended to just essentially repeat that item three times, under, one in, under each section with the correct one, and, so, I would just add governance and organization into the first bullet point again.
What about the third bullet point? I'm sorry, advise the town council on matters of town governance and organization.
Well, that's town governance, not town council, rules, governance and organization.
So you'd like to put it back in?
So I would put, I, I think it might have just been a cut and paste, what?
And these are in your document?
That one's in my document, yeah. I think it was just a cut and paste, didn't quite get the whole copy.
Okay, all right.
So, on appointments, I have a lot of recommendations or requests.
Take us through it one by one.
The, it is, right now it's worded as make recommendations to the town council regarding all appointments by the town council, and then references Section 2.9. I would like to split that up to be really clear, so I would change that sentence to make recommendations to the town council regarding appointments by the town council to the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals, and reference specifically 2.9C. I would add a bullet point that says, make recommendations to the town council regarding the appointment of non-voting Finance Committee members, and reference Section 5.9. I would change the, I guess, I would change it in both, but it's only listed in one, instead of review and advise, it, it could be review and make recommendations to the town council on all appointments filed by the town manager for employment as department heads, and then same with multiple member bodies. I'm okay with move, I, I think Evan made a very good point on, should department heads go to the other one? My only concern is we would be splitting that up, and is it wise to split that, just split that one out? You might get pushback from Finance that says, well, then you should point, push, you know, you should move the Finance recommendations on Finance Committee members to Finance instead of to appointments. It makes some sense, though, that the person that deals with town, the committee that deals with town services reviews the town department head filings. In terms of other ones, I would add a bullet point, maybe under organization is where I put it, make recommendations to the town council regarding non-voting liaisons, which is 2.9D. They will have potentially appointments that the town council makes, but it's also on which committees, so that's why I left it general and not just on appointments, and threw it under organization. Make recommendations to the town council regarding non-voting liaisons.
Again, these are all in your document?
These are all in my documents so far. Then, under governance, and I don't know whether this is the right spot for it, there, this is where I'm clearing stuff up from the recommendations to town council regarding all appointments by the town council, Section 2.9C is what the original language was. I would like to see a clearing up of, there's other town council appointments that I'm not sure should just automatically be in a committee, and so, I drafted the language as only upon specific referral by the council, make recommendations regarding appointments by the town council of the clerk of the council, additional staff, the town manager, or the interim town manager, and then I cited the charter sections 2.9A, 2.9B, which is the clerk, additional staff, 3.1, which is the town manager, and 3.6, the interim town manager. They happen potentially so infrequently, and some of them are so major, that it might not logically sit within a standing committee if we actually, as a council, have to appoint a new town manager. So I, I want to clear, and, and maybe our recommendation as a committee will be, yes, it does sit in this committee, but I think an actual clarity of where do those recommendations fall? Do they fall on this committee automatically, the, whoever's dealing with appointments? Do they not fall within the appointments committee? Do they fall only if the council decides to, or could the council create an ad hoc committee if we're dealing with it? Where do they fall? And to be clear about that, I'm not wedded to the language I have, but I would love to see some clarity about those specific appointments, and where they stand. And then I had two other recommendations, I don't know whether they fall under legislation or not. The generic GOL may offer policy and other recommendations within its purview for town council discussion and consideration, that was added into CRC as a generic, it might be worth putting into all the charges generically. And then the other one is, and this is again wording I'm not sure works, but, review and make, make recommendations to the town council on matters referred to the GOL regarding town council policies. What I'm thinking of at this time, and I'm not sure the wording works for it, is, we drafted the public ways policy, like the actual policy, not just clarity, consistency, and actu- we drafted the policy. How do we get language into the GOL charge that actually gives us that authority? And I'm not sure this language works, because it might be too broad. Review and make recommendations to the town council on matters referred to the GOL regarding town council policies, it's the regarding town council policies, because, well, once you've got the policy, it should go somewhere else, it shouldn't go to GOL, but the policy itself, some of them might be appropriately drafted here, it might not, and, but I wanna make sure, things like when we drafted the public ways policy, if we're drafting policies or language on, I don't know, alcohol on the common, if they feel like that belongs in GOL, that, that we've got language in this charge that covers things like that? I just don't know how to word that.
Okay.
I know that was a lot.
I know. And so some of it clearly is in your own document, but some of it is really questions for us to ponder, and without, I think, something in writing in front of us, it's gonna be difficult, at least for me, to, to say anything thoughtful or coherent.
So I might be able to post my screen up there, so that you can see it, if that would be helpful.
Thoughts of other members of the committee? I'm worried about getting into the weeds, but maybe it's unavoidable.
I think, I think so, I, I think, I, I agree that it'd be, this is why I have a question, I agree that it's weird to put all appointments except department heads in this committee, and then department heads in the other, which is, which is why I put that as a question, as opposed to a suggestion, so I'd love to hear what the two other members think about that. And then, as far as, I understand what you're saying about recommendations regarding appointments to the town council. I guess, I, and we had talked about that before, I think you and I talked about that, not in committee, but like, person to person at some point, and I thought about that, and the reason I kept it vague for right now is just because I wasn't sure if there are other appointments by the town council that we hadn't anticipated. Like, OCA never really thought about liaisons when we designed OCA, and then it was like, oh, these are town council appointments, these should go to OCA, and I, and so, I always prefer to draft a little bit broader than, than super prescriptive. So for example, let's say that, you know, Meg Gage steps down from participatory budgeting, that was a town council appointment, so we would be in charge, the town council's in charge for filling that, but that doesn't fit into one of the categories in this, so I guess it's, it's about how, how, how specific do you wanna get versus broad, which I, I think is sort of an in-the-weeds question, but I think is, is probably important to, to talk about. And then, the one other thing I do want some feedback on is whether or not review of the town manager falls in this committee.
Well, that I do have thoughts on, but Steve, any, any particular thoughts you have so far on any of this? And that's, it's okay, I'm sorry?
Pondering.
Good, that's fine. My personal preference has always been to get the annual review process of the town manager out of this committee, and into the hands of an ad hoc committee, or into the hands of the president, calling some kind of ad hoc committee, for a number of reasons. One, I think it's an appointment that really intersects so many different, every member of the council is involved, I don't think we bring any particular expertise here, and I think we have more than enough to do, not that the president, and, uh, doesn't have more than enough to do, but I would, my personal feeling would to have, have this out, and leave it to some ad hoc process, every year, that the president would convene and appoint X number of members, and it would be their job to coordinate and, and pretty much do what happened this year. I, I just shudder at the thought of this committee trying to organize and manage that process, but that's just me, so, that's the one contribution I have, I'd love to see that out. Steve?
To that point, I think the president has to be involved.
Yes.
In the evaluation of the town manager, so if, yeah, so...
I'd prefer to leave this with the president and, but maybe that's too vague, but I, I'd like to have it out of our chart, but that's just me, and maybe, sounds like maybe Steve. Anyone, any thoughts on that? You can ponder.
This currently sits in OCA.
Right.
I, I think, George, you can...
I'd like it out of OCA.
You can, yeah, you can speak to this about, OCA, in this past review of the town manager, wasn't exactly sure what we should be doing, and I believe most of it was done by the president in some coordination with one other counselor who had some experience, and so, I, I have no issue taking out of any committee charge, I think there will be some pushback on the council, but I think that that's, we're gonna get pushback on a lot of this.
Right, a lot of it is, right, so...
I have, I have no issue with that.
And if we take it, okay.
I think that there's a broader conversation beyond that about, we know we have to do this annual review process, if we take it out of any committee charge and it appears like nowhere in the rules, there's a lot of ambiguity, and so, that might be something, and if we do take it out of every committee charge, it needs to be paired with a rule that says annually, the town council president shall appoint an ad hoc committee to, something like that.
Yes, right. I would personally favor something like that, as opposed to having it reside in a particular council committee. Okay. Other thoughts about how to proceed here? What we did with the first charge is that Evan would incorporate Mandy's suggestions, but we have here some that are more, really not concrete suggestions or changes, but more, almost philosophical, or more pondering, reflective type questions, and I have to confess that for many of them, I'm not sure I have a particularly, I don't have a particularly thought-out view, so I'm not much help. Evan, go ahead.
So, I agreed, I think, with most of what Mandy just said, I, like I said, my, my, I have some concern about being overly specific with appointments, and I think I have some slight preference of just keeping it vague and saying, any appointment by the town council resides in this committee, although I would be in favor of maybe carving out the town clerk and the town manager, 'cause I do think that, that's, especially, especially carving out the town manager. I like the idea of upon referral, we come up with policies, I think under this proposed structure, a lot of the policies that GOL has already drafted would probably likely sit elsewhere, probably in, in the proposed TSO, but I think that there's always the opportunity that there might be a town council policy that comes to us. The, the one thing I would maybe push back a little bit on, is you said something about how, in the CRC charge, it says that they can craft policy and make recommendations within the purview of their charge, which if you'll notice, actually, in my suggested revision, I took out of the CRC, oh wait, I didn't.
You just didn't put it in the TSO charge.
I just didn't put it in the TSO charge.
Yeah.
I actually, I, to me, the statement that a committee may offer policy and other recommendations within its purview is like, obvious, like, I don't, I don't know that that needs to be in a charge, so I actually would take it out of, I thought I actually, I took out a lot of stuff in the CRC charge, and I actually thought I took it out of the CRC charge, but now I'm seeing that I didn't, 'cause it's sort of like, well, yeah, obviously they can offer policy within the purview of their charge, so, I, I think it either goes in all of them, or it goes in none of them, my preference would be the latter.
And I propose putting it in all, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not wedded, I'm not wedded to it, I just, it just seemed weird that one would have it and others would not, so yeah, I think it should be an all or nothing. I am just, my computer is not finding Amherst Town Room, so...
It's all right.
So I don't know, it found the Samsung TV, I think, upstairs. No. Oh, I don't know what...
Just a quick question for Lynn, you, you do have access to these, you can see these, these charges? You, you do?
I don't.
'Cause I have hard copies, I can give you hard copies. I can give you hard copies. All right. They have a few notes on them, so don't throw it away, but, let me see, find, those are, they're in order.
I'm gonna see if I can download it.
I believe Finance is in there as well, Lynn, I hope. Just briefly, the rationale for putting OCA to rest, perhaps the answer is it's rooted in the restructuring, there's, there's no, I mean, one obvious rationale is that, that it's nice to streamline our committee structure, it would allow, it's gonna have some positive benefits, and the various duties of OCA are being redistributed in various places. No, I think I'm trouble, I'm trying to find it, I didn't mean to keep it from you, but I've got more pieces of pot, it's right here. Yes, and that is on this, right. And before, I think it came, Lynn, what I had agreed, and the committee had agreed, that when we do produce a kind of consensus draft for each of these charges, we would send it, I would send it to the relevant chairs, not to the entire committee, but to the relevant chairs, as soon as I can. Understanding it's the holidays and people may not get a chance to look at them, but I try to get it to the relevant chairs, three of whom are sitting right here, so that, that's pretty easy. But Andy, I guess basically speaking of Andy, he would get a copy of this, but it would be revised. So what you see there would have some slight changes to it, and you would get a copy. So, again, I assume that's acceptable to everyone.
So, I just wanna say, I sent it to Lynn, I do not have the Solstice app and I can't download it without IT permission.
Okay, so, so. That's what I'm gonna ask. Are, are we done with GOL, and are we agreed with the name? I mean, this is not the most important thing, but I think GOL is fine as it stands.
I would add the A in, just to be clear.
So, it'd be GO, Governance, Organization, Legislation, and Appointments Committee?
Organization, Appointments, and Legislation, so it's a word. So it's literally goal.
The Goal Committee?
Have the acronym GO, I mean.
Alright. This is like one of those word games.
We should do that for all committees, come up first with the acronym and then.
It's just switch the O and the A and you have the Celtic word for jail. Which it does, one of the concerns, actually, one of the concerns I do have, that I probably should mention before we move on, is that this is going to create an enormous workload for this committee. I mean, I'm just thinking about, right now, as it stands, we have bylaws we're looking at, and we're looking at public ways, and now, we're gonna be also dealing with appointments. And if the appointments process goes through as planned, that's gonna, could become conceivably quite time-consuming, at least for someone on that committee. So, just in the back of your minds, a little concerned about the workload for this committee, but maybe that's just me. Evan?
Yeah, and that, that was, that was my concern, is I feel like G O, GOL has had its, it's a pretty heavy workload, and do we want to add to this? I think that, in theory, if the OCA process that was just adopted for town council-appointed committees works, and, and the new G O L says, well, we'll just continue with that, um, that's really almost an annual thing, except for vacancies, and we, certainly, OCA had just a flood of town
No.
town committee appointments, but we act, OCA hasn't dealt with a town committee appointment since like, early October. They, there are a couple coming, but I think that, the, the addition of appointments actually was dramatic in the first year. It almost made sense for OCA to just be the appointments committee to hash that all out. But I don't think that it's gonna be a huge more amount of work. The other side of the coin is that, you know, we, as Mandy Joe said, we did draft the public ways policy. We did draft the policy for candidate statements on the website. Honestly, I think under this proposed revision, both of those would go to the TSO. And so, I think that there are other things that now just get sent to GOL because there's nowhere else, that in theory, and ideally, would go somewhere else now, so, there might be balancing. But it, but I do also think that is an argument to remove annual review of the town manager.
Sorry, you should, yeah, if you don't mind.
As much as I agree that this year's been particularly tough with appointments, you will always have reappointments and appointments for terms every year because of the expiration of terms. It is the one question that, and you're raising it, Evan, and that is, the extent to which this could be more than, it, it could break the balance that you're trying to achieve in shuffling things around committees. Because the appointments process, regardless of what this year's looked like, is going to continue. And I just, um, am concerned that it could end up being more burdensome to whatever committee it's on. And the question is whether or not added to GOL, it tips the balance so the GOL now becomes kind of a workhorse that is not what you're trying to achieve.
Mandy?
So, I'm a little less concerned. GOL spent this year fairly busy, but we handled some of the stuff. We're getting better at handling reviews of resolutions, they'll get easier as things go on. Rules are slowing down because we're entering a period where we'll sit with them for a while, and we've noticed a number of ones that were, you know, that'll be an annual process that can be done in November. You know, I don't think we'll see as much of it taking up five, six months that we've been dealing with it ourselves since they were adopted back in June. We've been dealing with that, I think that'll slow down a little bit, and be a little bit more discreet during the year. Appointments, while there will be a lot of, you know, reviewing for, you know, approval, that, a lot of that will happen over the summer. So I think there will be different times of year if we do this, that one thing is more heard at GOL than other things. But, given the limited scope of bylaw reviews at GOL, you know, it's still clarity, consistency, and actionability, given that limited scope, I, I do think it's handleable. Even with appointments. I mean, there's, oh, throughout the year, there's always an appointment here or there, but the bulk, large workload on appointments will happen as they expire in June, on June 30, and come to the council shortly thereafter. There will always be potentially a planning board, or ZBA, or a department head, or the vacancy appointments. They're gonna be one-offs throughout the year, in, in what I've been seeing.
I, I'm hoping that, that that's not the case. I'm hoping that most of your appointments will come to you in the spring, so that when a per-term expires at the end of June, it's already known who will be taking the person's place. What you may be setting up, and I think it's a good idea, Mandy Joe, is a calendar, a kind of a rhythm, to when you do various things, like appointments tend to be more spring. Considerations of rules of procedure tend to be more, you know, once in the fall, or something like that. And maybe that's the key to having this work. The other thing is that I do actually hope that, and this is the first time I'm looking at these with specificity, that you get back to that issue about what is really GOL's charge with regard to, quote, "clear, consistent, and actionable", and whether or not it's ready to, you're ready to raise again the issue of going beyond that.
Evan, so, so one just thing I want to say, you know, having done almost a year on OCA, is that, and I think, George, I think you would agree with me on this, is that a lot of the time that has been consumed on appointments, including town manager appointments, has been figuring out what we're even looking for. And I think that OCA is at a point now where we sort of can look at an appointment, raise whatever questions, and then deal with them pretty quickly. So the last time we dealt with appointments, we had an hour discussion, and we got through six sets of appointments. That only took that long because there was one committee where there was sort of a mess around, and some confusion around appointments. But I think that, having done all of that work, even though we'll always be getting appointments, it, it, it doesn't take as long. And it, the reality is, assuming the OCA process that was adopted gets carried over, it works in this time. You know, the last eight OCA meetings were pretty much exclusively devoted to coming up with that process, with some town manager things spouted in there. If we didn't have that in front of us, you know, we would've had a lot more time. So I think that, you know, I, I'm not as worried about appointments because OCA has done the work in figuring out, what does it mean to review the town manager's appointments, and assuming that carries over.
Alright, then, I'd like us to move to the final two charges, which, in the document we have in front of us, one is called TSO, Town Services and Outreach, at the moment. And the other is the old, good old Community Resources Committee, CRC. And Evan, if you'd speak for a moment to the rationale, because what you're proposing here is to take a good portion of CRC, and, or some of it at least, and turn it into a separate body.
Yeah, so, you know, again, I think we started a lot of this discussion from the point of CRC's charge is really expansive and is, is perhaps too big for one committee. How can we divide this up? And my proposal is to essentially create a new standing committee, but dissolve an existing one so that we're not adding another standing committee on top of our responsibilities. My thought was, again, OCA has essentially two components, outreach and then appointments. If appointments moves to GOL, outreach can stay, and then the question became, well, so what do you pair with outreach? What logically pairs with outreach? And I looked through CRC's charge, and what I came up with was the idea that some of what CRC does has to do with how the community interacts with its government. How do we provide certain services? What are our relationships to the communities? What are our relationships to the institutions? And then other are sort of these long-term planning things, zoning, housing, stuff like that. And that's sort of the line I drew, was if it has to do with the interface between the community and town government, so whether that means the transfer flow of information, whether that means the provision of services, then that sits in one committee, and everything that exists outside necessarily of government, even if it might touch it, some like broader questions about housing, zoning, planning, those sit in CRC. And so, I pretty dramatically cut down CRC's charge, in part because I removed some components, in part because I removed stuff that I thought was sort of unnecessary, and, and moved a lot of stuff into Town Services and Outreach. So if I can just go through a couple things with regard to this. With regard to town services, and I'm not wedded to the name, I just had to come up with something.
I understand.
But Mandy Joe, at the last meeting, sort of said that she came down along similar lines, although for different reasons, and hers was sort of day-to-day versus long-term, and so I tried to sort of marry those two, and say the day-to-day provision of services. I don't know if that really accomplishes what she was hoping for, but it was an attempt. And so the idea being, what moves over from CRC is basically public ways, and anything that has to do with our public facilities. And what moves over from CRC is the relationship between the town, count, the town of Amherst and our institutions of higher education. What stays from OCA is outreach. Some stuff was added, so for instance, advising, make recommendations to the town council regarding town council participation in community events is one of the outreach things that OCA has done, even if it was never stated, and I thought it was useful to, just to recognize that. And then the other thing, the first, the first bullet advised the town council on measures that may affect the provision of services to the community by a town department, is actually adapted from one of the very first charge proposals that the president put before the council at our meeting on December 10th, that was never included in any charge. But I think captures a lot of the areas where we've been curious about where does this measure lie. And then, advise the town council on matters related to the operation of town government. I added that in there, and it's, it's, it's broad, and I am not wedded to it, it's just an idea. But that sort of, that, that was sort of anticipation of in case evaluation of the town manager or the department heads falls into TSO, sort of justifying that general operations, day-to-day operations, anything that might affect that. And, and I want to make clear, because I can already sense some of the pushback that we might get in the council, would be, the town manager deals with departments, the town manager, we don't have a say over that. And, and my, my response to that is, yeah, that's true, but we might be considering measures that would affect that. And so, the whole thing, none of this is meant to exceed our authority, but if the town council has a measure before it, like potentially a wage theft resolution that might impact procurement, or something like that, that doesn't logically go to any committee right now, but that would go to this one, because it would affect sort of the operations in the, of, of government.
Mandy, thoughts? Okay, Mandy has no thoughts.
I mean, you can see him up here, although, now that, I was doing this late at night last night, now that I look at it, my added review and make recommendations on matters referred is pretty much covered with the advise. It's just, I don't know whether we want, is advise comprehensive enough in some sense? Or is review and make recommendations a little bit better of wording? But essentially, that bullet point was, I wasn't sure whether advise was comprehensive enough, so I added in the review. I would, in staff support, put town manager or designee with an and in there. CRC right now has, its charge has town manager or designee. The designee is the Assistant Town Manager, Dave Zomack, and he is quite helpful in terms of being able to talk with staff that we might want to have appear before CRC, because there's a lot of questions that need answered, to get those answers, to do all of that. If this town, if this new committee is dealing with similar items or half of what CRC is, it would be very helpful for the town manager to be able to designate someone to sort of be in that role. So I wouldn't want us to restrict ourselves to not having that designation liaison. I, you'll see on the second page, oh, I, the third bullet point I added, including transportation. You know, it's, it's up there now, that in blue, the, after public ways, to, to, public ways and transportation can be considered a slightly different thing. Public ways is sort of parking, you know, I, I see public ways as the actual use potentially of the public way. Are you gonna park there, are you gonna have a fee there, are you going to have it wide or not? Whereas transportation's maybe a little broader to deal with things like, if a proposal that came to town meeting and was at our very beginning of this tenure, brought to us many times the addition of money for adding and keeping multiple routes for the PVTA. Where would it go? This would make clear that that's part of this town services thing, because it's transportation. It's not really the use of a public way, but it is transportation dealing with. And then, the other was the policy recommendations, but if we're getting rid of that, then, you know, those were my recommendations on this TSO. I thought you did a pretty good job at splitting it the way I had in my mind the split.
Lynn?
Just so I understand better.
Sure.
Back, way back, when I was having various conversations with people about CRC, there was this question about town services being things like safe, public safety and health, and whether that was really a CRC thing, or should that be elsewhere? So, I'm looking at this, it's raising the question for me. When we say the provision of town services, does that include things like public safety, health, whatever else? And, and giving some examples. The question of, does this include the possibility at some point of evaluating one or more of those services, which the charter, I believe, does speak to? And also, I do feel like somewhere in here, the town manager needs to be included, like Mandy Joe mentioned, because he oversees all these services. So I think, because this, this jumps up for me, it's really new for the council, I think it's gonna need some examples to help people understand what's meant by your points. And then my other question is, so does this mean that all public way requests that are long-term would go to this group? And then my other question is, so does this mean that all public way requests that are long-term would go to this group?
I would think the answer is yes.
Yes.
Okay. And therefore, does this mean parking?
Yes.
And things like Lincoln Ave would go to this group?
I think that the general, if I understand this, is the general driving principle is that this is a committee that would deal with where the rubber meets the road. So, um, you know, when you've got a parking issue in your neighborhood, when you've got, uh, you know, something concrete specific, anything like that. Whereas the, the suggested second committee, which would be still CRC by title, would be more long-range, master plan zoning, sort of big, bigger picture, more outward-looking. There's obviously going to be some overlap, but I think the, the basic attempt to separate out where the rubber meets the roads, sort of con, I think of constituent services as a term that keeps coming to my mind. Basically where, you know, the services the town provides for our constituents. So when a constituent comes to me with a, with a specific issue, this would be where I would think naturally it would go. But larger issues, zoning, planning, housing, affordable housing, homelessness, those kinds of broader big, big issues would be kept in CRC. Is my understanding of this, this distinction. Steve?
And I assume that those that have been working on this know that this, if approved, puts us very close to what Northampton has. So the Northampton City Council has four committees, finance, city services, legislative matters, and community resources. So to me, the only outlier is really the, appointments. So they don't, I don't know if they, how they do appointments there, but I agree with what you were just saying, that to me, city services is, yeah, it's like the committee on oversight of the executive branch, basically. And then the, uh, community resources is, to me, is much more of sort of a long-term, like what, what are the policies that we can set in place to create a more, you know, to help us achieve the goals of the master plan?
And I think economic development would fall into that as well. Evan?
Yeah, I mean, I think, and I think, you know, to me, this is a little bit cleaner than other proposals, but there are still, there are some ambiguities. So when I'm thinking about parking, and I'm thinking about specifically the parking report, and I gave this example last meeting, is so, um, a parking coordinator, which was one of the proposals, that doesn't make sense to go to CRC, right? Because that's really about how does our town, how do our town departments manage parking? So that would go here. To me, the parking benefit district actually is a finance committee thing. That doesn't belong in CRC either, because that's how do we fund our parking services? The provision of public parking is a city service, right? And so the Lincoln Avenue thing would come here. However, if someone, let's say, private, in theory, let's say a private developer wants to rezone a parcel to build a parking garage. To me, that's a long-term thing that ties with economic development. It, it, the city's not building the parking garage, the city's not managing it. That would actually be a parking thing that would be in CRC. Because it's about, are we going to rezone something to allow private development to, to provide parking? So the city's not providing, and so it does get a little weird because parking falls in here, but there are occasions when maybe it, it wouldn't. But I think that's the thing, is if the city is providing it in some way, then it falls within here. If it's something in the community that's tied to economic development, something like that, it would go elsewhere.
That, I was just going to expand on that rezoning. It would be in CRC and not this town services committee because that rezoning wouldn't just allow a parking garage, it would allow more than a parking garage. So you're rezoning a plot of land and that has, you know, even if it's at a request for a specific project, that doesn't mean that's the only thing that can go on it when you rezone it. A lot of stuff can go on it, so it doesn't, you know, while the specific request is to maybe build a specific project, that look needs to be much wider than that project. It needs to be, what does that rezoning allow to go on that land? And is that wise? Because it might not be that project. It could be anything else that the zoning change does, so, yeah.
Okay. One of the things that I think will be helpful with all of this is almost a, a chart that then says, so, here's where zoning will go. Here's where police will go. Here's where, whatever will go. Let me go to your outreach and community relations. It is my understanding that next year, there is a plan to redo the town website. And so here is an example of how the council may have, through a committee, some interaction around a website. You know, suppose at some point we decide we're going to do a bi-monthly newsletter. I'm not proposing it, okay? I'm just saying, suppose. That would be a part of this kind of conversation. Just anything that will help people.
Make it concrete.
Yes.
And I agree, I agree. And that would be included in the packet. And I could work with my colleagues on that, um, to produce specific examples. A chart, whatever format, but you're, I agree with you that that would be very helpful. Do we want to? Well, yeah, we also have a time factor here, but, um, yeah, let's take a look at CRC. Again, Mandy, I'm assuming you probably have a set of comments, which is, no, this is really valuable, that you would share with Evan, but obviously you want us to share them with us, which is. So let's look at CRC.
I actually, I don't know. My comment was keep town manager, designee in the staff support that's already there. Because it's been very, yeah, it got lost to clerk of the council. I think that's my only comment for CRC. I went back and I compared the charges and, well, you hadn't deleted the offer policy recommendations, so I was good with it. And, and you did delete, I, I do want to mention that one of the things that got deleted was the collaborate and or coordinate with town departments through the town manager where town committees is appropriate. And I was totally okay with deleting that because that seems obvious to me. That I don't think committees need to be told they can do that.
One thing that, that I wonder about is the, the, the relationship between the council and the colleges and the university. And, um, that seems to be an extremely important area, over which perhaps in the end we have very little influence. But, um, right now, that would fall in the other bodies' purview. Right, town services, which, I mean, I, I guess I think of that committee as town and constituent services, essentially, um, you know, responding to, and so you could argue that outreach in a sense is part of what you would expect to be a constituent service, that you, you know, right? We could still keep it, I mean, obviously it's an important part of the charge, the outreach component. I don't know if it needs to be in the title, though we could leave it. If you just had, uh, town and constituent services. The emphasis is on services, um, both those that the town provides and those that, that involve our, our constituents. But, um, with the, um, people are happy with that, in that body. So anything involving our relationship, so UTAC, you know, if the town manager eventually does tell us something about his conversation with the universities and with the university and the colleges, if we needed to refer, would we refer to that committee? If, if that's where it goes? Not to CRC?
I think so. If you think of the relationship between the two, in some sense, is a town service or, or constituent service. The UMass is kind, you know, all the residents there are constituents of us. So, and, and that, to me, that relationship is much more of a, can, I mean, it kind of can fall on both because it could be a long-term thing, but it can be a short-term. But UTAC, and, you know, think about what are some of our relationships right now? One of them is the coordination between UMPD and APD and all about, you know, parties and stuff and party registration and all. That's really a town service part, more than a long-term, land use, zoning, housing thing. So to me, it actually falls more logically in this new town services committee than in CRC.
And, and just as you pointed out with something else, um, if there was a zone, rezoning issue, which there could be, um, if you think about, for example, all of the land at Hampshire College out. And at some point, they, there might be a rezoning issue, then that would come to CRC because it's a very different kind of piece. But I, I do agree that the rest of the relationship really belongs under the, the to-be-named newly committee, new committee.
I think that, I'm sorry, Steve?
Yeah, but it could also be finance? You know, if, if there's a discussion of, yeah, yeah. So it really depends, it's too, I mean, I think everything is nuanced.
And I think this, what we're trying to do, our goal, one of our goals is to give as much clarity as we could possibly give. And that's why I think Lynn's suggestion of examples and, and you, Mandy has some in mind from her committee, Evan has some in mind, and Lynn has suggested some, you know, it's, you're right, Steve, that they're going to be, the council will decide finally where it goes. And then there are going to be cases where it could go, and may go to more than one place, but it's going to be a little bit of debate. But hopefully it'll be clear, people have a clear sense of, okay, this is where it should normally go. Okay, this is where it should go. And in those cases where it's, it could go in multiple places, we'll have a conversation. And there may be a few cases where we just have to hash it out. But it's, it's to streamline a little bit, so there would be a, a fairly clear for most situations where these things would go. That's our goal. And the discussion, hopefully, if it's a positive one and we don't get bogged down in the minutia, which, which could happen, um, people begin to get a sense of, okay, this, this makes things a little bit clearer. Not perfect, that's impossible, but clear. Evan?
Yeah, so, I mean, I agree with, with everything that was said. And I think that it, there's going to still be times where the council has to discuss. To, to me, that bullet has to do with anything that has to do with the town government and sort of UMass administration. But if there was a conversation about what's the impact of undergraduate students on neighborhoods or something, that would fall in CRC, right? There, there are three things that I did to this that I, I want to make sure I get specific feedback on. So one is I added a bullet, which was community sustainability initiatives. And the reason for that has to do with another thing I did, which was I deleted B and C from the original charge. B is what Mandy Jo said about collaborating with town departments. To me, that every committee can do that through the town manager. And then C was upon request by the town council, the CRC may study and consider other issues affecting community resources, sustainability, and economic development. I deleted that because it seemed also just obvious, like, yeah, like any committee can study an issue on, within the purview of its charge. The reason I added that bullet was, from a quick read, that was the only place sustainability was mentioned in the charge. And so by deleting that bullet, sustainability gets pulled. Um, and so I added that bullet to keep sustainability within the purview, even as removing that part C that to me is, to me, B, C, and D are just obvious statements that don't necessarily need to be, um, in a charge. But I specified community sustainability initiatives because the idea being that if it's some, you know, the town adopting a new revised fuel-efficient vehicle purchasing policy, that might fit more in town services, that's a, that's a town one. So I guess I, that's something I changed and deleting those bullets was something I changed. The other thing I put into question here is the master plan in accordance with Charter, Charter section 9.8. Section seven and eight of the master plan, one is specifically, I don't remember which number it is, but one is specifically titled town services, and it's all about facilities and stuff like that. I don't remember what the other one is off the top of my head. I, I didn't know if we actually wanted to carve those out because they belong elsewhere or if it's just sort of like, we don't need to get into that level of detail.
Mandy?
I would not. The master plan is meant to be a 20 to 40-year document, not a two-year document. So even though it might address town services, it's addressing it over potentially 20 years. Our charter requires a review, a rewrite every 20, a full rewrite, I think, every 20 years. I think MGL says 20 to 40 or something. But the charter specifically mentions 20 in section 9.8. And so I think it's easier to keep the whole thing together as the long-range vision of the town. And so what is the long-range vision of town services? Not how is it going to be implemented tomorrow?
And, and just to add to the conversation, so section eight is town services and facilities. Section seven is open space and recreation. So that's all of our trails and stuff like that, all, all of which is a service, so it's not a TSO.
Okay, I want to move us along, if that's all right, um, and bring this discussion to a close, but some clear sense of what our next steps are. But before I do that, just a very small point. Are we happy with TSO? I think the titles otherwise, GOAL, CRC, um, uh, finance, obviously. TSO, I suggest constituent services, is a town constituent services, taking the outreach out. Do we, we don't need to, I don't want to spend a lot of time on that. Do you want to leave it at TSO? Do you, any thoughts one way or the other?
I mean, it's either CSO or TSO, constituent services and outreach, or town services and outreach.
You'd like to keep outreach?
I think the T over the C is just a little more clear.
The watershed scientist in me, CSO is also an acronym for combined sewer overflow, so.
That seems a very appropriate title for much of what we do.
So, I mean, it's awkward, but I think.
TSO was fine?
So was OCA at one point, and we got used to it, so.
I am heartbroken that OCA is dying, but I'm overcoming that grief. Any thoughts, Steve? Just leave it TSO, town services and outreach? Okay. Next steps. Next steps. Obviously, we are, I'm asking Evan and Mandy to coordinate and produce a kind of penultimate draft of these five, um, these charges that we would put in a packet for the meeting on January 6th. I would produce a memo or, or a report which would address the rationale. And I think a third item would be, um, some examples, which could either go, I think it'd be a separate document, and we still, I still have to ponder this. But I agree with, with Lynn and with the rest of you that, that some specific examples would help at least focus the discussion and maybe, maybe not, um, stave off some, some sort of knee-jerk reactions when people say, oh, okay. Or they could throw out something and we'd have to say, okay, where does that go? So those are three things I have in mind. With the goal of January 6th, um, with the president's approval, it would be on the agenda for a discussion.
It's coming up whether we want it or not. Since the group, since the council has asked that we discuss the president, the vice president, and the committees. So this is, um, part of what has been asked for that discussion.
So that, okay.
And can I suggest, there's actually two screens that I would put each of these committees through. One is, if you go to the town web page, it allows you to pick any number of things like zoning, okay? And you push on a button. I'd find, I'd find a home for each of those places. The other thing, and this may not be doable between now and the 6th, and that is, we've often wondered, does every committee in town know where its kind of link is to the council? And so at some point, going through the list of all of the committees and saying which committees belong, which committees would find their home with which standing committee of the council? That's a big assignment. And sometimes they would be finance, and sometimes they would be something else, so it's not clean.
So the town webpage and the, uh, the town committee list, standing committees, connecting them to this proposed change would be very helpful.
That goes to something that I believe, Mandy Jo, you brought up almost a year ago now. And that was, at some point, do we review committees? Just let me say, make sure you understand what you're taking on when you decide to do that one.
Yeah, okay. Evan?
So if the committee want, so my next week is very open. So I, I know other people have like families they're trying to probably maybe spend a holiday with. But I've, I've told mine not to expect that.
Evan, you can stay, you can come visit my family. Come on.
No. So i- i- if, if the 27th is, I, we're, we're in an awkward position of needing everything by January 6th, and, but there's no meetings of any other committee during that time. We're not meeting again, um, so I'm trying to figure out a process. I could, I could get all of these materials, Mandy Jo's thing, I think I can do what Lynn's suggesting, although I don't want to 100% commit to it till I start doing it because it might be something that's much harder to do once you start. All of that by the 27th, and I could send it to George. But then the question is, does it go out to other committees first? Does it go out with the, I, I, timeline is.
Right, right.
I don't imagine that all of the other committees are meeting before the 6th. I guess OCA would be meeting. Huh?
OCA meets Friday.
Okay. And finance is not meeting until the 7th?
That is correct, right.
CRC is not meeting until the 8th.
Right.
So I wouldn't send it out to the other committees now, but if something's drafted, I think if we assign one person to do it, they can seek comments from others, as long as they're the ones that have final sort of say in what it's produced. So if Evan takes on some drafting, if he wants advice from one of us, or, he can seek that before it heads out to the council in a packet. And just like you as chair can seek advice on your report.
Right.
Before it heads out.
Again, giving it to one, to one individual, at least on this body.
On this body, I think, yeah.
Fair enough. So.
I also don't think we're going to get consensus on these on the 6th.
No, no.
I think the only, and I'm, let me just, let me leave it at that.
I can seek help with the report and, or the memo. Evan and Mandy, do you want to work together to?
That, and we need to.
So I will, so I will, let's do this. I will take on the revision task in compiling some of the requested documents, with the goal of getting it out by the 27th. And if I feel as though I need assistance, I will. Reach out to whoever appropriate, keeping it under quorum of anybody.
Okay, fair enough. All right. Mandy?
One technical, if we're putting this in front of discussion for the council on the 6th, I always go back to, do we want some sort of motion today or sense, so that you and your report can say, not that we've approved all of these, but that this committee is in unanimity or in support of this rewrite at this time? I don't know what it would look like, but do you want to be able to say something that says, there's a sense of this committee about this, because there was a formal vote?
Usually when we vote formally, we're voting on something concrete in front of us. This is still a work in progress. I'm, I can certainly state in public that there, with confidence, that there's, this is a consensus document, but it's still not ready for, I don't know, you know? I mean, if we vote, what are we voting on? We're just saying, you know, we, we, we support the general process that we're still trying to create. I mean, it's, I think we're just not at that stage.
I mean, I think we could frame it in the same way that OCA did with their process of, we're looking for, here's a preview, we haven't decided on anything, things could still change, we're going to edit, here's a preview of where we are at this moment, and we're looking for your feedback to incorporate in the next meeting.
Right, right. So this clearly is not going to be something, as Lyn said, we're not going to vote on it on January 6th. We are presenting it for discussion and feedback, and then it comes back to us one more time. And then at that point, hopefully, we could, we would have something we'd actually vote on and say, this is what we recommend. I think that's where we're at. All right. One last quick item, and then we need to get out of here. Lyn has asked me to do this, we have touched on it in your packet, and we're not going to really look at it now, but in your packet is my latest attempt to describe a public ways process. Obviously, I have one particular request in mind, but it clearly, I think, is something we'd like to, and if you get a chance to look at it, what you'll see is that we have four different sources of rules and regulations that intersect here. We have the charter, we have the rules of procedure, we have actual town official policies we've created for public ways, and we have MGL. And I'm going to continue, in the document, you'll see that I have reached out to town manager Bakalman, I've reached out to Angela Mills, and I've reached out to Lyn. And I'm going to continue to keep them in the loop, because this, I think, all intersects. But at the moment, my plan is to take this, I want to go back to Angela Mills and get clarity on MGL to the degree that we can. My personal feeling is MGL does not include parking, and I just need an answer to that. So in that document, when you get a chance to look at it, and I'll send a copy, of course, to the president, I just have some questions that I hope will get answered this week. And then I would craft something for us to consider, hopefully, at our next meeting. But what I have at the moment is the latest version of it. And it's a work in progress, and it's been looked at, and I've gotten great suggestions from all those three individuals, but obviously, it's, so, that's where we're at. Okay? So I guess what I'm telling you is I'm going to continue to refine this and get more input, and hopefully, on January 6th, it'll be a finished, you'll have something a little bit more polished. And again, if you have individual thoughts on this, you can send them to me, just by email, just to me, I know, any thoughts, concerns, reactions, suggestions. Maybe you understand MGL better than I do, but I read the, I only read the brief lines, and I didn't see parking there. So the reason is that I don't see why we have to have the full, you know, requirements that a public hearing has in terms of MGL requirements. But the answer may be, we do. Or it may be that we don't, but we, we're going to do it anyway. Having said all that, I have any discussed future agenda items. I've mentioned Rule 8.6, that will be on the agenda. Obviously, the revised version of this will be on the agenda, this meaning what we've just spent the last hour and a half talking about. And I will have also probably something on public ways requests. Anything else people would like added to the agenda? I am looking forward to a referral of the future considerations from the bylaw review committee, and just to put that out there, and to reach out to our president, and when that comes, that's going to be an interesting addition to our plate. Okay? There is no public presence, so we do not have public comment today, and I'm going to declare this meeting adjourned at 12:38. Thank you all very much.